Our viewers for tuning in. In order to reach even more voters shortly after the conclusion of this forum, a video recording of this debate will be available online and you'll find that link at lake democrats.com. Now, over the next hour, the candidates will discuss issues of concern to citizens, young and old in Lake County. And because school board races are nonpartisan, all voters in Lake County can vote in the primary election for school board district four. The top two vote getters will appear on the general election ballot unless one of these four candidates receives more than 50% of the vote, in which case they will be considered the winner. The candidates for Lake County School Board District four are in alphabetical order: Molly Cunningham, Betsy Farner, Sandy Gamble, the incumbent, and Michael Garcia. The format is simple. This forum will last one hour, and when we begin, each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and share any information that they feel is pertinent. Following the introductions, each candidate will receive identical questions and each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. Now, the questions all present were submitted by registered Lake County voters. At the close of this conversation, all candidates will be given one minute for final remarks. For this and throughout the conversation, a timekeeper will keep us notified when a candidate has reached their time limit with a 30-second warning and a final warning when the time is up. And with that, we'll begin again in alphabetical order with opening remarks from Molly Cunningham.
Good evening. I first would like to thank you, the Democratic Party of Lake County, for hosting this forum. I am Molly Cunningham, and I am currently a candidate for District four Lake County School Board. I have worked for 36 years in Lake County. I recently retired about two years ago. I have been a teacher, a dean, an assistant principal, and a principal. I believe that I am uniquely qualified for this position because I have worked on committees to negotiate salaries and other benefits for SEIU employees. I have worked on committees to hire superintendents and upper-level administrative staff. As a member of my community, I have been on the board of directors for Cornerstone Hospice as well as Central Florida YMCA. I have given a bigger part of my life to making sure that the schools and the lives that I was able to touch in Lake County were better off for having known me. All those things, I think, join together to make me the best candidate for District four. So I'm asking for your support on August 18th. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cunningham. And throughout this conversation, if the other candidates could put their microphones on mute while another candidate is speaking, we were able to hear some background noise during Mrs. Cunningham's reply. With that, we'll go to Betsy Farner.
Hello, I am Betsy Farner, and I also want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk with you all and share my views. I have proven my leadership skills as a Lake Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor and Chairperson for 12 years. It's a federally elected office, and this office is dedicated to the conservation of water and soil. And I have a master's degree in curriculum. I've been teaching for 37 years, just freshly retired from Taverres High School. Go Bulldogs! I earned my National Board Certification, and any educators know that earning your National Board Certification is every bit as challenging as getting your master's, maybe even more so. So as I said, I've been teaching for 37 years. Thirty-three of those years have been in Lake County schools, public schools. I taught at Taverres Elementary, Taverres Middle, and 15 years I finished at Taverres High School. I understand the parent-teacher-student relationship. I understand a lot of how the community feels, which sometimes people in administration might not quite get the picture because we are on the front lines with the students and the parents. And just sometimes, I mean, you know, some administrators are intuitive to that. I'm just asking you for your support. I have been a union member ever since I started teaching in 1981. I had some years off from teaching. And I have been, and the LCA, ever since I got into Lake County Schools, I have been a union representative for Lake County Schools and Taverres Elementary and Taverres High, so a total of 12 years. So I would appreciate your support on August 18th. Thank you.
Gary, your view? Zoom is new to me, Mr. Gamble. Mr. Gamble, I apologize. It is now your turn, sir.
Thank you very much for inviting us here this evening. My name is Sandy Gamble, and as you said, I am currently the incumbent for District four for Lake County School Board. What do I bring to the table? Before I was elected in 2016, I had served for 22 years as a blue-collar grassroots employee for Lake County Schools. I also served as the chairman of the SEIU Union for the Classified Employees. I sat on the executive board for the SEIU for the state of Florida with our union. I have served as a council member for the city of Taverres. I was elected five terms. I served eight-plus years. One of those years, I was the mayor. Another year, I was the vice mayor. So I'm very aware of how different budgets are put together and funding has to be used for particulars. The thing that I bring to the table is I have a grassroots, as I said, I have a hands-on experience. I don't bring a college education. I bring a hard knocks, on-hand experience, knowing just how things have to be done. And I've been going through a lot of training of learning from other people as well, teaching me different things. But a lot of this I learned on my own. What do I bring to the table also is I've served so far almost four years on the board. In 2016, we started with a 77% graduation rate, and that by the end of this year, whenever the finals come out, we will have a 90% graduation rate. I, as a board member, did not do that. What I did as a board member with four other board members was hire a superintendent that put together a team to make this happen. I can't take credit for anything that is done through the school board. We do it as a team. And I ask for your support in keeping this team together as we move forward for our students of Lake County. That's what I'm about, is the students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gamble. And our final candidate is Mr. Michael Garcia.
I want to thank you very much for the invitation tonight. I look forward to this forum that we're going to be having to be able to get to speak to everyone. What I bring today is 27 years' worth of law enforcement. I've worked for the Orange County Sheriff's Office, for the Orlando Police Department, and I currently am working as a supervisor for the Mount Dora Police Department. It's been my pleasure to serve our community in that facet of work all these years, and it's given me the opportunity to be very diverse. It's given me the opportunity to go ahead and work not only in the schools as a school resource officer, but also as a community liaison to different committees. In Orlando, I worked for the International Drive of Chambers. I sat on the board for the YMCA Teen Achievers Program. I spent most of my career working with the Fraternal Order of Police Unions and the National Latin Police Officers Association of the United States. And those times I became the state president here, I saw the diversity that was needed in our communities. I went out and helped, and we helped officers through that same token. What I want to bring to the school board is all that knowledge of being in the streets every day, knowing the people, really putting my hands on the situations that were at hand. Our school board needs leadership that understands what's in our community, who has lived in those communities all around. I grew up in the South Bronx of New York City, a little rough area, but it taught me a lot of things. It taught me that if I wanted something, I needed to work hard to get it. And I'm proud of what I've accomplished all these years to be where I'm at currently. So if you're looking for someone to get on the board who's going to go ahead and be really hands-on, boots on the ground, from a school of hard knocks, and seeing everything that it takes to see as a law enforcement officer, but also sit on committees and understand people's needs as far as a parent's concerned. I have three children. I currently live in Mount Dora, and I support my city and my county. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. We'll begin now with the questions, and throughout this forum, we'll be rotating the series of questions to give every candidate an opportunity to speak first. With that, we'll start with Molly Cunningham. And also, to be fair to the voters who presented these questions, I decided not to paraphrase them. I'll read them to you as written. This first question deals with COVID-19. And this is the question the voter presented. There are two big questions. The first concerns whether and when schools should reopen. The second question concerns what precautions should be taken when schools reopen. They ask, "When should students return physically to school?" Because Lake County is experiencing many more new cases of COVID-19 per week now than when schools were closed in March. Should the federal or state government tell Lake County when to reopen? Should infection rates in the mortality rates be considered? And should teachers and parents have a choice? They also add, "When schools reopen, what precautions should be implemented? How should the school handle students who refuse to comply with precautions?" There's a lot to unpack there, but Molly, if you can respond to that rather lengthy question in 90 seconds, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I will do my best. First of all, I have a lot of concerns about students returning to traditional school in a few short weeks. What I would tell you is that I am a parent. I have two adult children who went through Lake County Public Schools and did well. They are both now graduates of the University of South Florida and doing well in life. I have grandchildren that are currently in school. And I have to tell you, having been a principal, having had the responsibility of doing class sizes and looking at facilities, having built a school, I am convinced that there is almost no possible way that you can properly, if we go back traditionally as we have in the past, I don't know how you can provide proper distancing, nor can you do that adequately. I am not on the school board now. If I were, I would have many, many questions. I do believe that parents and stakeholders should be consulted, as I understand there was a survey. But I also believe, or if I were the person making this decision, there would have been some open forums where people could come and sit down some town hall meetings and get their opinions out there. Because I believe, as a school board member, when I go in to vote on something, I need to be representing my constituents. And in order to do that, I have to know what they think. I have to know what things concern them. I have to know what things they have fears about. With that said, I share many, many concerns about the children returning to school in the traditional way.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cunningham. And I'm not sure whose dog was barking, but if everyone could mute their microphones when another candidate is speaking, that would be wonderful. Betsy, Ms. Farner, rather, would you like me to repeat the question, or would you be able to answer it based on the first reading?
I believe I can answer it.
Thank you.
As a parent of three children and a grandparent of two children, it does concern me very much the reopening of the schools. From what I understand, being a union member, we did get an email, a very important email today, saying that, I guess, the school board attorney basically is advising the school board to go ahead and reopen the school. So there comes some concerns that our president of the union has, as well as other people, like having, you know, the face masks. As a matter of fact, I might just pull it up and look at a few things that he was saying here, because we just got this today, and it's kind of critical. He was saying, "As educators, we're charged with providing facts about matters that affect our children and our educational process. We're concerned about whether or not we will have the right supplies there for school. We've also, we're concerned about what is going to happen because the bus situation, apparently the buses are going to run as they did last year. And there are a lot of bus drivers who are very concerned. There are rumors that they may be quitting. A lot of the bus drivers are older, and some of them are retired, and this is what they do in their retirement for their retirement job." So I'm concerned about the students coming onto campus and being on the school bus ahead of time. I really don't know how this is going to work out. I think students who have compromised immune systems really should take the online school, but, you know, that's got to be up to the parent.
Ms. Farner, I'll have to interrupt you there. Your time is up. And we'll turn the question over to Mr. Gamble.
Last night, there was a deep discussion in our school board there from the public input, and what was informed to them was this coming Monday, there will be a workshop starting at 9:30. We're not sure how long it will be, but the main topic is about reopening those schools. And we are delegated by the governor that we're told to open up in August, but it doesn't say exactly when in August we have to open. It just says in August. So there are some things being looked at there that will be presented at that time, if not sooner, by the superintendent. But that is something that we are very concerned about, is the student safety. I myself have three grandchildren, one in elementary, middle school, and high school, that I would be very concerned and swayed about saying, "Hey, I just want to send them back." No, I just don't want to send them back. I want to make sure they have the proper things there in the classroom, in the buses where they may be riding, to make them safe, and also the employees safe. The school board has purchased, and it's in the warehouse, and will be at the schools, supplies that will be there for the students as well as the teachers and staff. We're making everything possible to make the rooms safe, but we are kind of, as you might say, handcuffed as far as we can or can't do because of the emergency order that was sent down from the governor's office. But we will have a meeting Monday that everybody's invited to at 9:30 on Zoom. Would be the best way to look at it, so you can have your social distancing, but you're able to listen in, and you would also be able to send in for a comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Gamble and Mr. Garcia.
Thanks, Gary. So I'm going to have to say I'm with Sandy on this one. Please go to the 9:30 workshop so that we can get some really good insight of what's going to be and get some good feelings, feel out where the community's going to be at. You can do it also on Zoom and your YouTube channels. And I've been saying this since I started, and I'm not going to go ahead and change my order. The emergency order given by the governor says we need to open our schools up. There's a lot of different reasons for opening our schools up. One of my main concerns is going to be, and it's always been since I've been talking about it, is I'm worried about my kids, my kids that are not receiving their lunch and their breakfast every day. A lot of my kids also count on school for being a safe place from their homes or from their neighborhoods, and I want to make sure they have that ability. I think there are ways to make our buses safe for their bus drivers traveling, and I think that we can educate them on that. I think also educating our students to make sure that our students know, hey, we do it for fire drills, we do it for police shooters drills, we do it for tornadoes and hurricane drills. We can go ahead and educate our students, even before they even get into school right now, how to keep a distance and how to make their cells safer in sanitizing. I believe that the school buses are going to be coming in, but there'll be opportunities to clean those buses every time a new group of students get in. The same thing in our classrooms, making sure that we help educate them where shields or masks could be used in the classrooms to keep our kids safe. I have three children of my own, and I want to make sure they're concerned. And maybe this time around in the next couple of months, we'll need to use some virtual school also in there. But remember, our FTE dollars don't get paid to us if the kids are doing virtual.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. We've reached the 90 seconds. And just as a heads up to all of our candidates, you may be able to see Jane Hefting, our timer, our timekeeper. She'll be putting up a red card at 30 seconds, I'm sorry, a green card at 30 seconds and a red card when your time is up. We're now moving to the second question, and this will begin with Ms. Farner. The question is about improving salaries and benefits. A voter asks, "Our teachers are underpaid. Under Florida law, a brand-new teacher can earn more than an experienced teacher. As a school board member, what will you do to increase teacher salaries and benefits and make them fair?"
Thank you. This is one of the most important issues to me, after making the same amount of money for the last nine years and retiring with the last five flat. It just is not fair to the veteran teachers who have been teaching and putting a lot of their money into classroom supplies, in which that also has been cut considerably from year to year. I, in my best power, would try to increase the teacher pay and not just for beginning teachers. We literally have a revolving door of teachers. At Taverres High, because I've been there the last 15 years, we've seen more new teachers go to surrounding counties because we are the lowest-paid county in the surrounding counties. And they consider themselves free agents. We need to do something about that. I want to fix the public school system. I would love to see an increase in pay and maximize the federal and the state monies that are coming into the school system, and that is one of my missions. And I've had several teachers, I was retiring, and they're like, "Oh, please run for school board. We've got to do something." If we don't keep good teachers, then our school system is not going to be rated highly. Businesses coming into the area aren't going to even look at it. So they won't think of Lake County as a place that would be a good place for business. And there are so many reasons. If we have successful students, we're going to have a successful community. These students need more vocational education. I would like to increase that. So when they get out of high school, they don't necessarily need to go to college.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I'll need to interrupt now and pass the microphone to Mr. Gamble to answer the same question.
Yes, sir. It is the school board's favor to want to give everyone an increase. Teachers, the problem we have is Tallahassee came in and brought in a pay schedule back in 2014, then they brought in another pay schedule because they wanted to get rid of tenure teachers. And through that, they handcuffed the school boards where they could not give the tenure teachers more of a raise than what they gave, or an equal raise actually, to what was on the others that took the new pay scales. So they upset the apple cart. If they would leave things alone and give the funding necessary to the school boards where they could give the pay raises and give it fairly all the way across the board, rather than say, "Okay, you're a new teacher. We're going to start you here, but these teachers have been here for 25 years. You're actually going to make $2,000 less a year than they are." It's not fair, and we all agree to that. But we can't do anything that Tallahassee will not allow us to do by law. But what we are doing, and Tallahassee is sending now money to give new teachers, there again, a new pay increase, and then those that are above that, 47,500, they'll get a little massage. If Tallahassee would fund it through the compression adjustment that we're missing $18 million a year, we would have the funds needed, be able to do what we need for pay raises all across the board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gamble and Mr. Garcia. The same question, please. Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, I was just trying to unmute that. Okay, so that's one of my main points that I'm running on. I'm running on going ahead and being a team player and making sure our teacher retention is there. I mean, currently, right now, I can go to another county and make another $9,000 more a year. Right now, a teacher working 15 years or more is somewhere in a neighborhood of only $43,000 to $44,000 a year. A starting, brand-new teacher today without their pay raises from the new state that the governor put through, it's only $40,000. So my son, who's 24 years old, can make as much as a teacher starting 15 years ago, and that's not fair. And through unions and through our negotiations and through looking at our budget a little bit more, and I know there's money earmarked just for salaries, I got it, but we got to find ways to be able to help our teachers to get through. Even 3% cost of living is expected because we have a 3% inflation rate all the time every year. So I really want to make sure that we go ahead and concentrate on getting those type of benefits out there. And another thing I want to make sure is that helps our teachers to make sure they know what they're doing and coming in. Right now, $47,000 a year, which is going to be a new starting teacher, I have teachers that are talking about wanting to resign and start all over again now, because they're saying that if they start all over again, they get to go ahead and make more money than they currently are after 15 years. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you. I will be there to support anybody who wants to go ahead and vote for me on August 18th when it comes to...
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia, and Ms. Cunningham.
My platform, one of the planks, deals with raises. I am very familiar with how a school budget works. I totally understand categorical funding. I also understand when the governor and the legislature earmarks money. But I am also aware that a district has within their purview to restructure their budget and to give raises. Now, while I understand that that may not be an easy thing to do, we tend to do what our priorities are. And I will share with you, my last couple of years as a principal, I lost excellent teachers who chose to drive to Orange County. They drove there because they could go there and make more money. It's a simple fact. People will go where the money is. And Lake County is going to continue to be a revolving door until we're able to offer salaries that are commensurate with our surrounding areas. I think it is deserved by the teachers. I sat in that chair. I've been a teacher. I was a teacher for a long time. I lived on a teacher's salary. I know that is a difficult thing to do. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right. It is very difficult for a teacher to know that there are people in the system that make a lot of money, and they make a small amount, and they carry the heaviest load. So my commitment is I would do everything within my power to make sure that the budget was restructured such that there is something in the way of a raise, but not just for teachers, but for all employees, because I have seen firsthand for over 20 years how hard they work.
Ms. Cunningham, thank you very much. And Mr. Gamble will present you with the first opportunity to answer this next question regarding working conditions. The question from a voter is this. "Lake County has an issue with attracting and retaining good teachers for a variety of reasons other than low salaries, such as little job security, very high workload, and a lack of autonomy in the classroom. What will you do specifically to improve this situation?"
Well, personally, I can't do anything as a school board member because all that is left up to the superintendent and her team. The only thing is that we can help and try to instruct the superintendent and give her some guidance on what we think may need to change in that category. But we have to understand, as a school board member, we're responsible for policies and procedures. As far as day-to-day operations, that's solely up to the superintendent. But the things that happened there as far as maintaining and trying to retain, we do retain some highly qualified and highly effective teachers, but we do it through different benefits. Not all counties have the benefits we have as far as the health insurance and the other things that we offer. But, you know, the thing is also is that we try to do what we can with the finances we have, but there's not all, you know, it's been said that the funds here and there. The problem is, we give the funds to the principals. It's up to the principals in the school how they disperse those out. It's up to the principals in the school how they disperse the responsibility to the teachers and the superintendent to be responsible for the principals.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gamble. Mr. Garcia, would you like me to repeat the question?
If you don't mind, Gary, can you do that one more time?
Yes, sir. It regards working conditions. It says, "Lake County has an issue with attracting and retaining good teachers for a variety of reasons other than low salaries, such as little job security, very high workload, and a lack of autonomy in the classroom. What will you do specifically to improve this situation?"
Well, as everyone knows, I'm getting ready to probably retire during this time that I'm in the middle of this election. So I'm going to have a lot more time on my hands because I will have nothing else to do but do my job as a school supervisor. One of the things I like to do is be hands-on and be boots on the ground. I know that the supervisor or the superintendent of schools does work with the schools, and that's their responsibility of what happens in our classrooms, and that we're in charge of the policies and procedures that go on. But one of the things I look at is, I mean, I'm really looking forward to working with some of our volunteers that want to go into our communities and work with younger kids in the elementary schools and start some extra reading programs to help. If we start our kids reading early, they'll only advance and become better students throughout the time period. There's a lot of things that we can do, joining with our community and working with our teachers to see what they really need. I know that as a board member, we're separated, but being there to help and push and make sure that that school principal knows that we got their back is going to be really important. And that's what I'm looking forward to do when I'm out there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. And Ms. Cunningham, the question goes to you.
When I first was recruited to Lake County over 36 years ago, I was a teacher. Later, when I became an administrator... Later, when I became an administrator and later a principal, I had the responsibility of trying to create a work environment that was conducive to retain teachers. While I understand very well the role of a school board member, I also know that during my time as an administrator, I developed relationships with my school board members, and I was able to talk to them. And oftentimes, in their role of policy and procedure-making, they were able to share some of those concerns with the superintendent. They were able to take those concerns to workshops, and they were able to make some changes that were in benefit to all concerned. I while I realize that everyone has a distinct role, of course, the superintendent's job is to run the schools. The principal's jobs are to run the schools. But they have to work together. They have to speak to each other. They have to understand the feelings and the thoughts of all people involved. And I think when that happens, then you can have some things happen that will work out to the good of everyone involved. So my pledge is, certainly, I will I will follow the law as far as what my role is, but I will also not hesitate to speak up when I feel that something needs to be changed or perhaps there's a better way of doing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Farner?
Let me unmute. There we go. You know, I've been thinking about doing a community outreach program and having volunteers coming into the classrooms to help. Maybe, you know, retirees, grandparents who are retired, coming to read to kindergarten students and first graders. But I, even if I am not on the school board, I am going to volunteer in Lake County schools. I will go to schools and I will help them. I'll help teachers if they need copies made. I'm a I'm just passionate about teaching. I'm passionate about teachers and the the relationships they have with their students. So the anything that they need that I can do, I will help them out. I will help the principal out. I'll be probably the volunteer of the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcia will begin with you in this next round with this question dealing with social problems. The question is, what responsibilities should school districts assume for dealing with social problems that interfere with learning, such as racial injustice, poverty, hunger, homelessness, emotional illness, and drug abuse? And what would you do to address some of these issues?
I, like I have done for many years as a school resource officer, I've actually been in those type of situations. I'm crisis-trained and have been on crisis teams before. One of the programs that we brought into the schools here in Mount Dora was called the GRADE Program, and it was gang resistance through education and training. And that program was free donations from an actual bond that we had done out. And one of those things that we do is go ahead and teach these children how to deal with the bullying in school, how to teach them about social issues in the classroom and also at home. A big component of mine was to go out and make sure that students had enough food to eat in their schools, make sure their their neighborhoods were safe. I had students to come up to me in the past and ask me to help get rid of some of the issues in their neighborhoods because they were feeling unsafe. School's a big avenue for that. One of the things that we put is I want to make sure there's diversity represented in school. I I feel like there's a lot of students that have different social issues that we could come up with. And I want programs, and I would support those programs, that the principals and that the teachers want to put into our schools to help.
Thank you very much. And now, Ms. Cunningham, would you like me to repeat the question or are you ready to answer?
I I think I can answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have had the opportunity as a principal of low-performing, high-poverty schools. I've actually been principal of three of them. And when I went to them, two of them in particular, they were failing schools. And part of it had to do with outside influences on the children. I think that it is important that there is an establishment of a school culture. I think there needs to be training. I think that is something that definitely makes a difference. I have found it to be extremely helpful when you're trying to reach the students. Because if someone is hungry or if someone is worried about what's going to happen on the way home from school, then they aren't going to do well in school. So I think it's very important that Lake County comes up with a plan that provides a protective zone and that all students know that when you get to school, this is a good place to be. The people that are here care about you, and they're going to take care of you. This is where my unique experience comes in. I've done those things. I've been doing it for the last thirty-five years, and I'm simply asking for an opportunity to continue to do that. So again, that's why I'm seeking your vote on August eighteenth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I believe we now go to Ms. Farner.
All right, thank you. Well, in the past ten years, it seems that the social problems have increased quite a bit. And I mean, now the students are being served free lunch and free breakfast. And I always bring crackers or one of those variety packs of chips to my classroom because I've had students who said, I haven't eaten all weekend. The last time I ate was when I was on campus Friday. And they just go through the crackers like you wouldn't believe. So we definitely have problems with, we have problems with homelessness, too. And we have problems with students not getting enough food. We've had students who've had their stepmother chain-lock the refrigerator and, you know, put a padlock on it with a chain so they couldn't get in. So I am all for getting a program developed that can help these students. Because I'm seeing it more and more to various, to various schools, we usually didn't have that problem. But now that we have a lot of single-parent families, this seems to have increased quite a bit. And I I've had some students in my neighborhood, because I live in this district, where they haven't seen their parents in a while, and they're living without food. And I had to empty out my pantry and get macaroni and cheese and stuff. So there there is a definite need for that. We need to do something. And I will be right there to help approve of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Gamble, you'll finish up this question.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Presently, the school board already has some programs in hand in anti-bullying, as well as our liaisons that go out from the schools to the homes to visit. We have guidance counselors. We have counselors, psychologists that work with our students to try to help alleviate some of the problems of this nature. The problem is, until it's it's something that's solved toward at the home, it is not fully going to get solved. If they go home into an environment that is not good for them, and it's this type of programs, you're trying to do this at the school, and you in the school, you should have a safe environment there for the students that they'd be able to go to and can be able to go to a guidance counselor or to even a teacher at times. Some of them take a teacher and and take them, and the teacher takes them under their wing and says, hey, you know, what's what's happening? You're not looking right today. And so the teacher works with them, and then maybe take them up to the counselor or up to the psychologist and allow them to work with them and so they could get to the root of the problem. A lot of the root of the problem, though, happens at home. Some of it is because of poverty. And anytime a there's a problem at home, nine times out of ten, it's because of finances. And then there's other things that are there, too, that I won't go into because I don't want someone to sue me later. But there's a lot of problems that happen at home that we can't solve at school, but we can try to help get some help and assistance to go out to their home. And that's where we have programs set in place already in the Lake County school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham will begin with you in this round with this question about improving the curriculum. What suggestions do you have for improving school curriculum? How do we raise math and reading scores and better prepare students for college? Should we offer courses on basic life skills and career skills?
Thank you for that question. First and foremost, student achievement should always be the main impetus of any school. And we should have a system that prepares students who are going to college. But at the same time, we should have a system that thoroughly prepares students that choose, for whatever the reason, not to go to college. Curriculum is something that I have dealt intimately with. I've had to go into schools and revise it and change it. I think for those students that excel in academics, we need we need a lot of things to happen earlier for them. I will give you an example. When I was principal at a middle school, we started offering Spanish in middle school because we found that in high school, a lot of those students weren't able to take their foreign language until their junior year, simply because of the numbers. On the other side of the token, we found students that couldn't read, so they needed a different kind of curriculum. Curriculum is everything that does and does not happen within a school, within a school day. I think that there can be no level of how to explain how important that is. And I think the members of the school board need to have a thorough working knowledge of that. Because while we would be developing policies and procedures, if the core of what the school is about is not understood by all members, then it's very difficult to make sound judgment when changing when changing policies or making procedures to carry out those policies. Again, I tell you that.
Ms. Cunningham, I'm sorry, your ninety seconds are up, and you're welcome. We'll now move to Ms. Farner. Ms. Farner?
Yeah, sorry. Okay, I'm here. Again, reiterating what I had said earlier, as far as the curriculum, I think we need to bring more, maybe apprentice vocational curriculum into the school system. Because this, every student being college-bound is just not working. Not every student is going to be college-bound. And you think about how much electricians can make or plumbers. And if we brought in some kind of vocational apprentice programs, they could learn a a trade. And then, when they graduate upon graduation, maybe they have to go to Lake Tech for more vocational ed, or maybe not. But I think it's really important that we take a look at our curriculum more closely and set it for a more diverse need, because this should not be a cookie-cutter type of mold. Everybody is unique. Everybody learns differently. Everybody has their own desires for the future, and a lot of students don't want to go to college. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farner. Mr. Gamble, the same question to you.
Could you repeat it again, please?
Yes, I can. What suggestions do you have for improving school curriculum? How do we raise math and reading scores, better prepare students for college? Should we offer courses on basic life skills and career skills?
Okay, yes, I I agree with some of what's already been said. We presently, we have quite a bit of extracurricular CTE programs in our school system. And even this coming year, at Yuma Tella High School, there will be an HVAC class being offered there. And once those students finish that, they can get certified as an apprentice or or go to work. This past year at Leesburg High School, we had a construction academy that they built a high school. The students there built a a a house in the city of Leesburg. Eustis is going to have the same thing programmed next year. South Lake High School's opening up, reopening theirs next year. The thing is, we offer all these programs, especially Colony Arts. They have CTE programs there that they're certified in their programs there. We have other things at schools that they go to, nursing school. We have, as I said, many different programs, but improving the math scores and things of that nature there, that goes back to the curriculum there is what's there, and we're getting rid of the common core. So that that will help some of the confusion that's there because when school board members are given a math equation and they answer what they think it is, and a third grader tells them, I'm sorry, that answer is wrong because you didn't go through the common core technique, there's a problem. So we need to get back to the basics of our math and our reading and teaching our kids how to add, subtract, and how to properly read so that when they graduate, they have a concept. We, at freshman year, decide if you're going to go to college or to go to a career tech and make that pathway available for them at that time and let them stay on track. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Garcia.
Thanks, Gary. You know, I have three children, and they're all individuals. They all have a different learning curve. My first kid just graduated from college just recently in January from UCF. And my second child, he's the hands-on kind of guy. He can go out there and fix anything we put his put in his hands. And my last one is probably going to be some Supreme Court justice genius. She's just that diverse. But here's the thing, early reading programs, like I was saying before, in a lot of inner cities, help our students get in advanced on how they're going to do in their later years, especially in middle school and high school. The vocational training that we have currently, I I I like it. The one at Leesburg is really doing well for teaching the construction side of the business. Mount Dora actually has a great culinary school that they put their kids through. And if you ever get a chance, go to their cafeteria. They'll show off a lot. Basic life-saving skills, life skills, basic life skills is important in our schools. When I was over at the Mount Dora High School, we started an Omega Lambda program to help kids get sports scholarships to be able to go to school. And we're teaching them right now. It's currently in place. And I'd like to duplicate that. It costs us no money in the schools. It's actually privately funded from an outside source. And dual enrollment in our schools help our kids to get an advantage because they'll get extra credits just before they can go to Lake Sumter and start their way into schools. So we have a lot of programs, and it's really exciting for our schools to go ahead and learn. But to me, the diversity is really there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. Ms. Farner will give you the first shot at this next question regarding public school funding. What do you think about vouchers, tuition tax credits, and scholarships to private schools, charter schools? And how can we increase public school funding?
All right, thank you. Well, when it comes to charter schools, private schools, peripheral schools, I mean, you know, we do need to have them. Everybody needs to be able to have a choice. However, I really plan on improving the public school system so we have the same output as far as student success that these private schools have. And I'm trying to remember the rest of your question.
Would you like me to repeat that?
Well, the funding, the funding.
How can we increase public school funding?
Okay. I know there's a formula. When the funding happens, they have different formulas where you can figure out the federal dollars coming in, where you can use it, and the state monies coming in, where you can use it. I would like to maximize those, too, without having to increase mileage rates. But we definitely need to do something to bring our school system in Lake County up to an A-school system. We were a C-school system, you know, the year before last. And then this past year with the coronavirus, we fared out better, but then again, we didn't do the end-of-course exams. So I am taking a look at the budget right now very carefully, and I'm not a data-driven person. I'm trying to understand the best I can, but I think we just need to maximize the federal and the state funding. We got a lot of money, like two-hundred-and-twenty-two million dollars from the state. We need to figure out how we can maximize that and bring our school system up where it should be. So we don't have.
I'm sorry, Ms. Farner, just to be fair to every candidate, I'll stop you there, and we'll switch this question to Mr. Gamble.
Could you repeat it, please?
Yes, sir. Public school funding, what do you think about vouchers, tuition tax credits, and scholarships to private schools, charter schools? And how can we increase public school funding?
Four years ago, when I ran and was elected, I stand on the same statement I made then. Charter schools have a place in Lake County because we're not able to properly build schools in a time manner to be able to house our students and put them through an education where they have a seat where they're not overcrowded in schools. So the charter schools do have a place, and we have a good rapport with our charter schools in Lake County. We have turned down some because of their curriculum was not to our standards. And then they went to Tallahassee and and they were, our our judgment was overturned, and so we had to accept them. But the the funding, as far as that part there, as I said earlier, there's a in ten eleven point six two, we've been arguing this for quite a bit for a while in the past years, but that's called a compression adjustment. What that is to do is supposed to make up the difference that we don't get on our standard FTE funding to bring us up to where we are compatible with other counties all through the state equally so that we can properly educate our students. Our main focus is the students of Lake County. How do we properly educate them? How do we get funding away from the charter schools? We take the FTEs that they get by bringing those students back to the Lake County schools and properly give them the education that they need that they could not get from a charter school. That's how we build our funding.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gamble. And Mr. Garcia.
My belief on this is that parents should have a choice. So I still believe that charter schools do play a function in our communities. But I want to make our schools, our public schools, more competitive, to be more on the edge. I don't want people lining up just to get into a charter school. Our our local schools should be just as competitive so we can actually get the money back into the system. Every student gets paid a different dollar. Even if we put kids all in virtual school, we're going to be losing money in the county. So we got to be watching out for that, and that's why it's important that we all come back to school. And that's why it's important that we all come back to school, um, if we can safely, to make sure all our students have it and all the money is coming back into the funding. Um, that's one, been one of my, um, ideas that I've been running around with currently right now. So going ahead, adjusting, um, the schools, making sure our charter schools are there. But I want to make our schools more competitive in the communities to be able to raise our grades that all of a sudden we have our parents just flooding back into our schools and not even looking at our charter schools like we did before.
Thank you. And Ms. Cunningham?
Well, we live in the United States of America, which means we have choices. And I believe that parents have an obligation to their students to choose the best school that they believe is possible for their child. As far as funding goes, I think that we need to return to some ideals and some practices that we used in the past. Um, in the past, we've worked with the county commission to establish Lake County Day. And that was a time when school board members and county commissioners went to Tallahassee and they lobbied the legislation. They talked to them about their needs. Um, you know, sometimes a good talk or a good sit-down and making a, a conversation with someone who has the power to change your funding is a good place to start. I would also say that we need to look very carefully at what we're doing. Um, charter schools, the reason parents are going there is because they believe they can afford them something that we cannot. That means we need to look at ourselves, we need to improve ourselves such that everything that they're offering, we find that we not only offer it, but we do it better. That is my goal. That has always been my goal for wherever I worked. I wanted to be an A, I wanted to be the best at whatever we were doing. I think if we could establish that as a common goal among all Lake County school employees, then we could raise our district to an A and be very successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This next question will go to Mr. Dambel. But before we begin this next question, I'd like to, uh, check with our timekeeper. We may modify the amount of time that we allow for answers because we only have about 10 minutes left and we'd like to get as many answers in. And if the candidates are fine with this, we, I'd like to limit the answers now to one minute, uh, just so we can get a few more questions in. Uh, this question goes to Mr. Dambel regarding school safety. Do you believe teachers and/or staff should have guns in their classroom or on campus? Should police officers handle discipline problems? And what steps should we take to make our schools safer? Uh, again, you have one minute.
Okay, and that's a big question. And first of all, the board has voted not to allow teachers to be armed at our schools. Instead, we've allowed the administrators. In this past summer, the guardian program was condensed down to a two-week program where we had quite a few administrators that took advantage of that and became, uh, they will be deputized by the, the sheriff where they will be allowed to carry a, a weapon on campus to protect their campus. Uh, we're doing everything we can to make sure that the campuses are safe. And I forget the second part of your question.
Uh, the second part of the question was, uh, what steps should we take to make our schools safer? Should police officers handle discipline problems?
Well, first of all, the sheriffs and all the police chiefs will tell you that those officers that are on their campuses there are not there for discipline. That is up to our administrators. So, uh, they, they don't handle that part there. If there's a problem that needs to be taken care of, then the administrator involves them in that situation. But, uh, I've had the police chiefs and the sheriff both tell me, my officers are not there to handle discipline, that's your administration. We will assist, but we will not handle the discipline. So that would be my answer on that part. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Garcia, you have, uh, one minute to reply.
Um, I'd like to say that, yes, um, the guardian program has been goo- has been helping out. And we have streamlined that program to two weeks. The other thing is that having administrators in the schools in the guardian program would actually save us money from having to actually pay guardian on the property. The other thing is discipline problems have always been handled by the schools first. And anything that's a criminal act gets handled by the police officer on campus. Our main job on the campus as a school resource officer for five years was not to put children in prison. It was to make sure that children had the idea that if they made a mistake, they would be punished and we could use the discipline program or we could use other, uh, programs that were available to us in the WULA and also in, uh, actual citations to go out to them and their parents. Um, I do not believe in going ahead and resting every student on our campuses for the most minor offenses. Discipline could also handle that too.
Thank you very much. And now, Ms. Cunningham, you have 60 seconds. And if you could unmute.
Yes, sorry. Uh, by state definition, the principal is responsible for running the school. That is to include discipline. I have worked in schools where I've had resource officers and I was very thankful that they were there. Uh, and they stayed in their role, which was to handle criminal acts. Um, I believe that that is very important, that everyone understands what their role is and everyone does the definition of their role. Um, I believe that the guardian program has a place. Uh, but anytime you start talking about guns and people, um, having been in that role for a number of years as a principal, and I grew up as a part of, I grew up on a farm, so I understand guns, I know how to shoot. But it's a lot different when you're trying to protect the lives of your students. So I think all of those things need careful consideration. And those administrators that feel comfortable doing that, then certainly they should have that option. Uh, but I believe that it all has to work together to keep the school safe.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Farner?
Yes, thank you. Well, after teaching even from Columbine up to Stumend Douglas High School and the shooting, after that, I am so happy that we have a guardian program for our school system. It's very, very beneficial. I was talking to, um, the administrator of it, Mark Palmer, and he's retired from the sheriff's office. And he was telling me yesterday about every public and charter school by state statute must either have a police officer or a guardian on campus at a all-school hour time. And, um, and I agree with Mr. Garcia. Mr. Palmer was saying that for one deputy on campus per year is $110,000. And paying the guardians, it's $15 an hour. So you can basically, basically hire three guardians to one, um, deputy. And I feel so much safer when there was a guardian on campus. Uh, Taverri's High didn't have a guardian for half of the year because they had a shortage and since we were close to the county office in 441 and the sheriff's office.
Ms. Far- Farner, in the interest of time, I'll have to stop you there. And I'm going to make one more time adjustment, hoping to keep this as close to one hour as possible. For this next question, our final question before we go to closing comments, uh, I would just like a quick answer in 30 seconds or less. It's a straightforward, uh, question, it, which will begin with Mr. Garcia. The question is, what is your position on gay, straight alliance clubs holding meetings in public schools?
I, I've protected people's constitutional rights for 27 years. Uh, I'm going to be fair and always be on the side of protecting, um, people's rights and their, and their feelings of diversity within the school system. And that's how I feel right now.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
Um, I have the dubious honor of being, uh, the principal who went all the way to the higher courts regarding that question. My position always has been that everyone has rights. Uh, those rights need to be protected as long as they don't infringe on someone else's rights. Um, again, that too belongs in the hands of the school board versus, uh, an individual principal. Um, the courts have ruled and as with everything else that I choose to do as an administrator, I will follow the law. Uh, I will respect diversity and I will respect the rights of others.
Thank you very much. Ms. Farner, the same question to you, please.
Yes, thank you. Again, everybody needs to have a choice. We have a wonderful country we live in where we have free choice and we can do that. And I think we need to protect it. I agree with everything that's been said so far. Um, it's very important that we keep our rights. And to take that away, whether you agree with what they feel about something, that is not the case. It's because we have our rights and we need to, you know, acknowledge that.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Dambel, you'll close out this question segment.
We have veterans, I'll tell you that they went to war for the right people to make a choice. And to make the right choice or the wrong choice was their choice to make. Unfortunately, uh, I can't comment too much on this because this was something that was done in, in a legal matter. But, uh, we have to take and allow people to make a decision and be able to have meetings when they need to have meetings. Uh, it's just that sometimes we may not agree with them.
Okay, thank you. And now that we're approaching the end of our hour, this leads to the final remarks by the candidates. Although there were other questions, I'm sorry, we just didn't have time to get to all of them. As promised, we'll begin in reverse alphabetical order, uh, with Mr. Garcia having 60 seconds for a closing statement. Then we'll go to Mr. Dambel, Ms. Farner, and then Ms. Cunningham. Mr. Garcia?
Well, um, I just want to stand on my platform and let people know that I am behind teachers in making sure that they're able to get adequate, um, pay, pay raises, at least cost of living increases while I'm going to be there. I'm going to be a firm advocate for that. Uh, another thing I want to do is I want to answer Deborah really quick, who asked me a question. No, our schools should never be pipelines to the prison system. Um, in fact, our teachers and our students and our principals will work together if I'm around to make sure that this does not ever happen. Um, that's never been one of our school resource officers' points. Um, and the last part of it is just remember, the diversity I bring is from years of experience of being in our communities and being there and touching and, and being able to know what children, what our parents are looking for and what our administrations are looking for. I look forward to serving you on a school board.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia and Mr. Dambel, you have 60 seconds for your closing statement.
Thank you. And once again, thank you for inviting us to do this this afternoon, this evening. Uh, number one thing is, as far as teachers raises or even classified support staff raises, I've always been in favor of that when the financing is there. Why? Because I have a vested interest in this. I have a daughter and I have a wife that works in the system. So if there's money to be had to give raises, I'm going to do everything I can to do it. This past year, I went to the finance director and I brought, presented items that I thought that could be used. And he said, no, you can't do that, Sandy. I'm like, why not? But he, and he pointed out the why. But we are looking at different things this year. As a board, we have worked together in the last four years to bring this county to what it is. I just want to say, we have gained 13 points on our graduation rate. We did, we, we went down from our dropout rate from 6.1 to 4.8. I think as a county with a superintendent we've hired, we have done an outstanding job. Continue to support the Lake County School Board with the candidates we have as incumbents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dambel. Ms. Farner, you have 60 seconds.
Yes, and part of the 60 seconds is I had a canine barking like mad. I did not hear your question, I'm sorry.
Uh, you have 60 seconds for a closing statement.
No, I, I did not hear the question. I had a dog barking and I had to have the dog removed, I'm sorry.
And there, there is no question, this is just.
This is my closing statement, got you, okay. Well, again, I feel like I'm highly qualified for this position being that I understand the parent-teacher-student relationship and the relationship with the community. And, um, after the 37 years in the classroom, I have so much passion to make things better for our public school system, for our teachers, for our classified staff, for everybody involved. And, um, I just really appreciate the opportunity to be able to answer your questions and listen to what your concerns are, because that's what your questions are. And it, it makes me want to go and research everything for you and be the best that I can be. So please remember Betsy Farner on August 18th for Lake County School Board, District 4. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the final comment and closing statement will go to Molly Cunningham.
Thank you. And thank you again to the Democratic Party for this evening. Like I said, I've spent over three decades here in Lake County working to help Lake County schools become the best that they can be. I invite anyone to check on the schools where I've worked and I've worked in almost every community in Lake County. And you will find that I worked to make that place a better place than when I found it. All I can ask is that you consider my unique experience and that on August 18th, when you go to the polls or mail your ballot or however you choose to vote, that you remember me. And I would appreciate your vote and support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, to all of our candidates. This concludes our online debate with the candidates for Lake County School Board, District 4. The primary will be held on Tuesday, August 18th. Now, to ensure that you're eligible to vote, we suggest that you contact the Lake County Supervisor of Elections Office. And that phone number is 352-343-9734. That's 352-343-9734. Or you can check online at lakevotes.com. Um, a quick editorial, I do want to personally compliment and commend each of these candidates. Having run for office myself, I know it's a, it's a big investment of time, um, in a, in a big sacrifice to, to your personal life. And I compliment every one of you sincerely, uh, for entering this race. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone who participated, the folks watching online, the people who provided the questions. We invite you to join us later in this election season as we present future forums with candidates. And you'll find those forums listed at lakedemocrats.com. On behalf of the Lake County Democratic Party, I'm Gary McKechnie. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.